Good morning, everybody, or good afternoon, depending on where you're located. Welcome to the Enable Town Hall meeting for November 20, 2015. Town Hall is a weekly Google Hangout on Air where team leads and community members are able to update the community on what's been happening. I'm Justine Diamond, your host for this week's meeting. This week, I'm running this meeting on a new computer, so I hope that there won't be any glitches, and if there are, I hope you'll just bear with me. Please remember that you can ask questions of any of our speakers through the Q&amp;A feature in Hangouts on Air. You'll find the Q&amp;A in the upper right-hand corner. Just click on the little grid of nine boxes, and it should come up. If you're watching the broadcast on certain devices, such as an iPad or certain phones, you may find you can't access the question and answer. So questions can be posted to the event page in the comment section. We try to monitor that as we go along and answer as we can, and if not, we put the answers up as soon as we can on the post itself. Remember, Town Hall is about the community, and it's great when people are able to share what they're doing locally with the larger community. This week, we're doing quite a bit of that. We have three special guests, all who have been doing amazing work in research and design. So I'm looking forward to getting to them and having them share the amazing work that they're doing. Remember, if there's something you'd like to share with the community at an upcoming Town Hall, or if you know about someone who's done work, who you think should speak, or if you've just done an event where you've represented Enable, let me know at events enable@gmail.com, and I will get you scheduled to come and speak. So what's been happening? As always, you'll find the calendar on both the community site and the foundation site, and there you'll find a list of activities that members are doing to represent what is going on with Enable. Next week is Thanksgiving, so we won't have a Town Hall on next Friday. And the following week is Autodesk University. Autodesk University is a large event that Autodesk puts on each year, where they bring in designers from all over, and they can take classes and learn about what's going on with Autodesk and their products. The exciting news there this year, Autodesk has asked us to be their service partner, and that means we will be at Autodesk for two activities. Every year, Autodesk does a volunteer service project. This year, that features us. We will have people who come to Autodesk University assembling hands. We're bringing 150 hand kits with us, and by the end of it, we hope to get people involved in what we're doing and putting together hands. In addition, we're running a hackathon, where we will be presenting three design challenges to people who sign up to see if they can help move our designs forward. So before we get into our designers, who are actually here today, we'll hand this over to Marla, who's got some things to update the community on. So you ready, Marla?
I am. Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Okay, great, great. Okay, thank you, thank you, Justine. I wanted to talk about something that came up in the community recently and inform people about the status of it from the point of view of the foundation. I love open communities. One thing common to all open communities is the general bruhaha, the tempest in a teacup, and machado about nothing. Sometimes, there's machado about something, but just as often, it's actually about nothing. The root cause usually turns out to be poor communications, not evil or even misguided actions on the part of volunteers. This is all just totally normal, this happens. So recently, we had one such tempest about the James Caan movie crowdfunding campaign on Indiegogo for a movie production called Wrong Side Bob. In the Google+ community, there were questions about what exactly the Enable Community Foundation had promised to do for this movie production, and questions about why anyone at the ECF would agree to sign something promising that the community would promote, you know, some random movie production, basically. Even if it's, you know, really cool or really wonderful, still, it's like, what does this mean? What are we doing? So it turns out, the number of people who can sign agreements on behalf of the Enable Community Foundation is very small. I'm one of them. I checked with all of them, none of us signed anything. John, our founder, and Grace, our interim CEO, who's also an attorney, reviewed three, like, half-page documents, they weren't even very long, with no signatures, and importantly, no promises of support by the Enable Community Foundation, much less the community. The ECF cannot make promises on behalf of the community. That's just not something we can do. In fact, no one can. That's the nature of open communities. That's one reason I love open communities. You can promise to do things as individuals, and anyone can invite people in the community to jump on a bandwagon and do great things together, but open communities never lend themselves to any sort of command and control structure. They just don't work that way. And personally, I think that's a great thing. People contact the Enable Community Foundation all the time, asking if they can do this for us or that, to benefit, honestly, you know, themselves, but also to give us a portion of the donation. And our answer is always yes, as long as you do not make any claims that we endorse you, that we don't endorse your business, we don't endorse your product, no matter how wonderful or aligned you might be. There's information on our website about how to donate or send money. It's enablecommunityfoundation.org. And it's fine, the people do these things and tell us that they want to donate, but as long as they don't say that we endorse them or anything like that. So I looked at the Indiegogo campaign for Wrong Side Bob. It is closed now, although I think with Indiegogo, you can keep giving money, so if you still want to, you can. They did meet their goal. It was, I forget what it was, but it works out to, the 1% they're going to give us is about $120, which is great, totally happy to get that. But there's no claims of the community having to retweet, or donate, or do anything like that. It just has our logo and says, "We want to support this group," and that's fine. So that's all I wanted to try and clear up. I'll still be on the call if people have more questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. One other thing that, Marla, let me just make sure that there's no questions before I move on. There are not yet. So one of the other things that Marla did, that she's not talked about, is she initiated a program this summer, where the foundation supported several interns at different research universities to do work, developing work for Enable. And if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we brought in a student, Justin Lavagere, who showed an adapter that he has designed for the phoenix and the raptor hand. And today, we have our second intern, and that's Caitlin Driver. She has, you know what? I'm just going to pass it over to her and let her show you the wonderful work that she's done. So Caitlin, you need to unmute, and it's all you.
All right, everyone, hear me? I hope so.
You're good.
Okay. So I designed a trumpet adapter this summer for, I was working through Professor Frankie Flood at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, so I'm a graduate student there. And essentially, Karuna wanted to play the trumpet, so he's currently using a Beast Hand that was fixed up for him by Frankie. And now, now he's got a special adapter just for his trumpet. So it's really nice. The trumpet adapter is made up of two separate parts. This part here is like the main part that attaches to the trumpet valve. And then, this part here just kind of slides onto the bottom of that, so, like so. And then, through a dovetail mechanism, you can slide on the hand, which is here, which is for a palm. So Karuna didn't have any fingers on his hands, and so we made this adjustable so that it can kind of rotate around. Sorry, mute to this. Okay. So we can make, we made this so it can rotate around and get the right angle for when he attaches to the trumpet, which is really nice. It's really nice in there. So he can keep this part on his trumpet the entire time. It fits in the case really nicely. It's a box trumpet. I also recently adapted one to King Cleveland for a little boy in Montana. And then, again, the gauntlet section for Karuna, which was also just working the same as the other prosthetic hands that have been made. So I borrowed essentially like the same belt mechanism, the same Chicago screws, all of that. I guess I don't really have much more to say than that. Any questions for me?
I will check and see if any, no questions have come in yet. I think that that's pretty fabulous. I like the fact that we can bring music. It's a big thing to be playing music, and it's wonderful. So I think the work you did is great, and I look forward, I've seen different things like that. I've seen, there was a violin bow and things like that. I think this is just wonderful. So keep up the good work, and I look forward to seeing what's coming.
Yeah, I think.
Next, we've got...
Excuse me?
Yes, sorry, John.
Hello, hello. So first of all, Martin has a question. Martin asks whether this can attach to other devices or instruments, because it does look like a really interesting generic mechanism potentially.
Yeah, right now, it's only for the trumpet, but I've been talking to Frankie a lot about how we could potentially make it so that it can, with the dovetail mechanism in particular, how we can make that fit with other types of devices. He's currently working on a swim fin for the same boy, and we'd like it so that there could be some sort of universal, like, hand part that could attach to all these different dovetail-receiving devices that can help with other, either instruments or other applications in sports, or, yeah, anything really in particular that...
That's very cool, Caitlin. I hope to put you in touch with Joe Clifford, who's working on interchangeable components for sport accessories. It may be that we have an emerging pattern here. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, I'm going to pass this over to Dean Rock. Dean has done some amazing work on developing some fingers, flexible fingers, based off of Peter Binkley's Osprey design with the monofilament. And I will pass this over to him and let him demonstrate what he's been working on. He's been showing this off at the R&amp;D Hangouts, and I definitely thought it was time to bring this to a wider audience. So Dean, it's all you.
Okay, thank you. What I'm doing right now is working with this finger. It's modular in that it snaps into the palm, just like that, and you're done. So it's printed whole, and it's made of flexible material, so it's very easy to change them out if you ever need to. These ovals also represent a possibility for mounting devices to go through these. So I'll show you what I'm talking about. Here's a completed hand. It works just like all our other hands, but with the flexible fingers and the push-pull, you have minimal resistance and a very strong grip ultimately. This is a flexible gauntlet. These are incredibly strong. I mean, I cannot break that. One of the traditional break points on gauntlets, of course, is where the slot goes into the meat of the gauntlet. Excuse me. So I think this flexible material, this is TPU from Sain Smart, which is thermoplastic polyurethane, has a lot of potential in our application. Another aspect of this hand with the Osprey is that the thumb is on a hinge, so it can accommodate fairly large things, and then when you tighten down, it will grasp it, just as it's doing with my finger there, but far away from the palm. If you look at it this way, you have adaptive grip using a Whipple Tree on the fingers. So ultimately, you only have two attachment points, or two tension bars. Some of the nice parts about this design is that, for the whole hand, there are 11 printed parts, so it's easy to assemble, it's pretty easy to print, and it works very effectively. I also tried putting this Sain Smart TPU, thermoplastic polyurethane, in the palm. Again, this stuff is incredibly strong. This is the very first one I made, and I'm still tugging on it. And I don't, I can't tell you, this is like 1.25 millimeters thick, and it's durable. Here is one that is half a millimeter thick. I don't know if you can see how, or thin, I should say. I don't know if you can see how thin that is, but even at that basis, it stretches, it pulls, it's comfortable, it breathes, it makes a great palm material. Finally, as we get there, I want to show you this widget. This is more proof of concept than an actual design, although obviously, it's a design. But that fits into the hand, just like that. The two long pieces go through the two fingers, like this, and then it mounts to the thumb, like so. And that provides a platform for all kinds of interesting things that you can do, because this widget fits right in there. So you put this in here, and you can mount, for example, a pencil, as I've shown here, or if you wanted, this is a clamp, a locking clamp. So if someone needed to hold something in place, again, having trouble doing this with the camera, you can see that there's a space for the clamp there, and that closes and locks. So if a person needed to hold a paper or something, you could do that and still have use of the hand at some level, even with the adapter in there. It's, the fingers still work, it's kind of cool. So my thinking on this is that, for one, no matter how good I've seen any prosthetic hand, even the really expensive ones, they always look like a prosthetic hand. If we go away from the design feature of trying to make them anthropomorphic or humanized, looking like a human hand, we're kind of doing what's already there anyway, and it opens up a lot of design possibilities, such as a finger like this, or a thumb like this, which, with the hinge, also gives you another level of strength that the ordinary hands may not have quite as much of. With the Whipple Tree and the adaptive grip, you, you know, that's obvious that it makes for a wonderful platform that's variable to all kinds of different objects. For example, if you are like me and you have all of these crazy stuff kicking around, you can pick up your favorite saber-toothed tiger skull, which happens to be sitting on my desk from the 3D printer world. You can pick up a lot of different things. So there's a degree of tactility, flexibility, durability, and the feel of the TPU is much nicer than the hard plastic. So with the flexible gauntlet, it just is more comfortable. So this is what I've been working on, and I think it has enough potential that it should be pursued at a more significant level amongst those who are researching and developing designs, and also tested. It needs a lot of testing that, frankly, I'm not well-suited to do, but I think this is pretty cool. And that's the presentation for today. Here's a tuxedo model, by the way, black and white. Oh, yeah. It's not fully completed yet, but it can show you how the fingers work in conjunction with the thumb when properly adjusted.
Okay, that's...
I just want to say, I think that is fantastic, fantastic work, Dean. I'm very excited about this.
I talked with Skip back in April in New York, and you too, John, at the Maker Show in New York, and Skip was very interested in the flexible filaments I've been trying out. I've tried a bunch of them at this point, and this Sain Smart TPU is absolutely the easiest to use and produces the best results for me on my machines. I have two different...
Would you say the name of the brand again?
Sain Smart.
Okay. And you might, you might post something about extruder settings, because it certainly looks like something we should all be playing around with.
Exactly. The settings are, you print at 230, and I keep the bed at 40, but it isn't totally necessary. It's available on Amazon. It's affordable, it's not expensive. And as I say, it's very easy to print with. It has no warp. It's incredibly strong once it's printed, and it's a little stiffer than Ninja Flex or the Semi Flex, so it feeds nicely through. I have both a Delta and a Cartesian printer, so it feeds very well through those, which is one of the problems with flex filaments generally.
So, hi, this is Martin. I'm very excited about the hand design. It really looks very cool. Also, getting rid of the elastic bands, or so to say, in the design. So can you repeat the brand again? Because I really love to get my hands on it and give it a try as well.
Okay, two things. I can show you the hand. I will post it a moment on the sidebar. I'll post a link to the STL files, so you can print your own. I will print the brand and type of filament. And as I, as you can see, it's, I don't know if you can see this on the camera, but even the motion like this, the weight of the gauntlet is enough to work the fingers. So there's very little resistance. The more, obviously, the closer you get, the more resistance there is, but it works as well or better than the conventional fingers. And finding ways to mount or putting a glove over the four fingers for specific applications gives you an opportunity to hold things that could never be held before quite that way. So I'm pretty excited about this, too. So I will print the link to the STL files, and the settings that I use, and the brand of filament. So there we go.
Great.
Okay.
I look forward to yours, Martin.
Thank you very much. Well, yes, and next we have Martin. Martin designed a hand, a very user-centered design for a specific situation with an anatomy where the regular hands that we have don't work as well as well. And so I saw this happen to Barbara the morning, and they come out and upload this on the blog, and do the community. But I thought, I mean, what he's doing, they say, it's so beautiful, if we put it on this, I think we definitely need it to be talked about in here. So, hold on one second, and Martin, where are you going? It's all you. Martin?
Yeah, no, sorry, I was a little bit distracted by the static of your, at least the way that it appeared to me, of you speaking.
I'm sorry.
No worries. So, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to share the design. First and foremost, I'll just go ahead and quickly share my screen, and I hope that that works. The, I'll share my entire desktop. Let me see if you see anything. And I'll move over to a little picture of the hand that I, that's basically Julia's hand. I'm not really sure if you can see it. What you would see is that Julia, really, the real use case for this application was that she has a remaining deformed finger, basically, her index finger and her thumb are missing, and she has a grown-up, yeah, finger. So it's really one piece that is connected, but it's still, it has some function in it. So her wrist is about here, and she basically has half of a palm plus a finger, which is, obviously, if you can see into the picture, a little bit default. So I really, from the get-go, it was clear that the original raptor design would not really fit her, because there is still some function in her hand. So we started to play around with, okay, what can we do? And when the initial fitting started, I basically said, well, okay, let's start off with a basic design, and I'll show you the picture that Justine alluded to earlier. There you go. So I started off with the original raptor palm and started to basically reconfigure that, so to see if I can actually make her hand fit into the raptor. So if I quickly skip back and stop sharing my screen, then I have the hand in front of me here. So what I tried to do is really, if you can see, there's a gap in it, and that was supposed to fit with, I have a scan of her hand here, so this is the scan that we made of her hand, and that would actually fit in this, in this area. So, like this. But what we found out is that, as soon as we did the fitting, and I'll just try to put it inside, something that I did not really consider, or that we didn't really notice during, during the initial, well, conversation that I had with Julia and her father, was that, essentially, when you start losing your thumb, so if you lose your thumb, and if you lose your index finger, not only do you lose the function in your thumb, but also you lose the tendons. So instead of having you allow them to make just a controlled motion with your wrist, what actually happens is that it turns away. So if she bends her wrist, it actually turns away, and that makes it very difficult to, well, have kind of a controlled action of, well, basically, the design that we have with the Raptors, where you really are relying on that, yeah, that controlled wrist function. So what started to happen is that she was really like, if you, if you would go to a carnival, and you have those little cranes that you pick up, like a little fluff animal, a plush animal, her hand was actually, with this model, was operating like that, and it was really not, not looking, looking very nice, and was really not functional. So really had to go back to the drawing board from this. So it's a nice model, but that's all it is. It really didn't work. So I was in the opportunity, provided the opportunity to present in the local fabrication lab here in, here in Brede, here in the Netherlands, to talk about the Enable project, because people in my, in my, in my area, they got notice of it, and they were all so excited, I think, like we all are, to really play around with the designs and also to help people. So the great thing about it was that not only it was a collection of makers that came to that, to that meeting, but as a matter of fact, we had people from a company that is specialized in making prosthetics and making orthises. They came also to that, to that meetup. And with them, they basically gave me some pointers and saying, hey, you need to really rethink the concept. So step away from trying to make... So step away from trying to make a hand, and just focus on function. What is it that you want to achieve? And they told me that probably the best way to go about is to first try to get the pinch function, to design around the pinch function, because that's really crucial for people to actually try and get to a new hand function. So if you focus on that function, so really the thumb and index finger, if you revolve your design around that, you might be up to something. So that really was, for me, was great, because I was there to present, but I got something out of it to proceed in the design. And that's really where, again, flipping to my, to my desktop, is where I started to play around with all the different configurations. So I have a doodle pen, so I started to basically draw a 3D sketch, playing around with different fingers that I printed, started to play around with really like that index function, and trying to get that to work. But obviously, because you need to reconfigure that, it's really, okay, where do you start? Because I'm, I'm an engineer by, and a graphic designer by education, and that's it. So where do you really start? So it's, it's really, you need to, you need to do, rethink everything that you already thought of, so. But luckily, I mean, when you start playing around with the concepts, and that's the great thing for us to have 3D printers and have things like doodle pens, et cetera, you really can get through with the different concepts very quickly. So you start off with having, well, really like a very rudimentary prototype that you can just, well, you design it and print it out in an evening, and you already know if your proof of concept works. So essentially, what I started to do is really try to get that pinch function. So this would be really connected to her, to her remaining hand, so remaining part, so her finger, so to say, and what I tried to achieve is that her movement would actually, instead of a wrist movement, the movement of her hand in itself would actually activate the thumb coming in, and trying to really mimic that, really that pinch function. And doing that, and I'll show you the final result, so this is the final result, I have one, one version here. It's, this is connected, so the, this is really a static, so the fingers that you see here, they are non-functional. But what is functional, and I'll just remove it for show, is this element. So this element, which is basically a linkage that goes inside, inside of the palm, that's functional, so that's connected to her hand, and when she, when she moves her hand, so when she bends it, actually the thumb already starts coming in. So this is the normal position, and start bending, then the thumb will come in. And that together with also a pull function, so it's actually a dual action, it can pull and bend, that together really makes it, makes her getting that pinch function in her hand. And for those of you who have not seen the video on Google Plus, I also have some pictures out of that, on how that really, really works, so bear with me for a moment again. So this is the open position, and so again, you see that the fingers are really non, they're non-functional, they're really only a static, and then this is closed. And with that, she can really pick up very small objects. Again, look at the picture on YouTube or on Google Plus, at first attempt, she was already able to pick up a very small part from my table, tabletop, and she was able to drink out of a bottle, just first attempt right away. So it didn't have, it didn't require her to, it didn't require a lot of fine-tuning eventually, so that was really cool. So we were, we were cheering and yelling that it actually worked, so quite happy with the result of that.
That's really fabulous. I mean, I was really, when I saw the stuff online on the community, and you imagine, I was really impressed. We don't have any questions other than a question about a trumpet demonstration, which unfortunately we don't have, but I know Caitlin has some great pictures on the blog where she documented all the work that she did. So Caitlin, maybe in the community you want to post some of the pictures. Does anybody have any questions for Martin, who's here in, in the meeting? We don't have any from any of the people who are watching right now.
It was a very clear presentation and very cool work. You know, what's particularly interesting about it is the way you've optimized what she does have and provided a complement to it. So it's, it's nice. It'd be interesting to know if this is a unique case, or whether it's a design that we, that would work for other people as well. But we will eventually find out as we collect data about the variety of cases there are.
Yeah. And I deliberately waited with posting the different design files to you imagine. In fact, Julia received her hand somewhere in June, and I really wanted to make sure that it is, it was functional, so that she could play around with it during the summer vacation, and then get some feedback and see, okay, is this really working for her and for people that have the same, well, the same situation? So, and then I found out that indeed, really she used it and played around with it all summer, and basically never looked back. And I'm not really sure if it's, if it's full, like, if they are so happy with it that they don't dare ask for anything more, but from what I responded, I got as a response from her father is that it's really, she's very happy with it, and she's playing around with it, she's going to gym class with it. So it really works, so that what eventually gave me to, okay, now it's time to release the file so that other people can also benefit from it.
And, you know, those reports about kids who do or kids who don't use these devices after the first day are really very valuable. We're gearing up to collect systematic data on this, but we really don't know how often and under what conditions which kids use which hands for what purposes.
Nice job, Martin. Very impressed with your design and how you adapted it. Cool.
Oh, thank you.
I hope you continue to work with the three-finger grip, because that seems to be a very effective combination for picking things up and holding and rotating. I've seen other applications of that, so, cool.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I hope my, my sound has corrected itself, I've been trying to adjust that. John, did you have anything you wanted to add?
You know, I don't think I need to dilute these wonderful presentations on all of the duck design that's going on. I think the only thing I'll add is that we are on the lookout for one or more note-takers to convert these town hall meetings into a textual form that can be scanned and possibly by readers, rather than watched in real time, and maybe even have links to the critical passages. If you think you could be a real-time note-taker on occasion, get in touch with Justine. I get a lot out of these town hall meetings, and I think more people would if it was easy to know what particular item of interest was discussed on what particular day.
That's true.
That's it for me.
Okay, that's true. And if anybody wants to, you can also take notes after, if someone wants to watch the video and take notes after the fact, that's a possibility, too. We don't have any questions, so I think we will be able to end early this week. Please remember, next week, we will not have a town hall meeting, but we will be back the following week, and I'll be actually doing that from Autodesk University, so I hope to have some great updates about what's happened there, the designers we meet, and the work to put together these 150 hands. So until then, happy printing. Bye-bye, everybody.